We're going to do the selectmen's race. And we have Christopher Hartling, Robert Hogan, and Nicholas Priest. And so the order on the -- for the candidates is Bob Hogan, Robert Hogan's going to go first with the introductions. And Chris, you're back there. It's a minute introduction.
May I?
You have the podium.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming. Thanks to the COA and Marge for putting this together. I've spent a lot of time in this building, talking to a lot of you over the years, maybe not this group. I was 11 years a member of the Board of Health, who's in this building, 18 and a half years as the Veterans Agent in this building. So I've spent a lot of time in this room. And it's always a joy to be here and to see all of you. I also am a member of Rotary, and we've done a lot of charity work around town for many years. I've been a Rotarian for about 20 years. And I'm also a member of the Board of Directors right now of People Helping People. I'm going to quote Ronald Reagan. At 71, I'm a member of this audience, of this population. And in quoting Ronald Reagan, "I'm not going to hold my opponent's youth against them." Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And then we'll have Nicholas Priest. Nick, for the rest of the debate.
Nick's fine. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me. Really appreciate it. To add to what Kevin said earlier, I'm also -- I've also been on Ways and Means for the past year. But I grew up here in town, and my wife and I moved back here about seven, eight years ago, and raising our three kids here in town because Burlington has the values that my wife and I want our kids to have. And it has a lot to offer for families. I work in healthcare advertising. I'm a writer. And when you work in healthcare advertising, specifically with rare diseases, strategic planning, community engagement, and communication are pivotal. They are so important. And when I wonder about the next, you know, 10, 15, 25 years of Burlington, I think that those things are going to be really important. What are we doing now to be planning out for the future? So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Nick. And Christopher Hartling?
Thank you, Kevin. And I'd like to apologize for being a little bit late. I appreciate that you --
Oh, no problem.
And I apologize to everybody. I had an unavoidable situation, so I hope you won't take it as disrespect that I was late. So I apologize. And I -- because I was late, I don't know if it was mentioned earlier, but it seems a little strange, the race this year not having Mrs. Mooney as part of it. So perhaps that was mentioned earlier. I don't know if it was, but I was out doing signs yesterday, and it was just different not seeing those. So I'm sure you've all thought of that at least once today. So again, my name is Christopher Hartling. I'm currently the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I have been for the last couple of years. Like Nick, I have Ways and Means experience. I've just finished my sixth year as a member of the Board. I am asking that you would strongly consider giving me another three years on the Board. What's important to me is important to everybody regardless of age or demographic group. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chris. So alternating the order now, we'll have Nicholas Priest come up. Nick, come up first. And the question, and you have two minutes to answer, what are your top three goals for your term if elected?
It's a great question. Top three goals. Number one, communication. I think that in today's day and age, with all the various forms of media and the way that everyone's communicating, we need to be reaching people. We have 25,000-ish people, residents, in this town. Maybe 2,000 come out and vote on a yearly basis. It's not a unique problem to Burlington, but it needs to be addressed. And to do that, we have to get out in front of people. I've knocked maybe 4,000 doors in this campaign, talking to folks, and, you know, folks are just happy that I'm out knocking their door. One gentleman told me, "Well, listen, I'm not voting for you because I like Chris and Bob." And I said, "Well, that's your prerogative, and I appreciate you being honest." He's like, "But thank you for coming out and knocking on my door. I really appreciate you putting in the effort and coming out to me." We can't always ask you to come out to us. We have to find ways to get to you and to listen to you, to hear what you have to say. And if only 2,000 people are getting out and voting, we're leaving, you know, 12,000, 13,000 registered voters in the dust. And the second thing I want to look at is transportation here in town. I know we always gripe about traffic, but I think it's a more holistic thing. I think that we need to start reconsidering, you know, the ownership of 3A, or, you know, if we need to just be more aggressive with the state and how we get things done. Bike paths, came up earlier, sidewalks. I know we have a sidewalk committee. We're looking into that. More public transportation, in-town transportation. The B-line used to be something, and, you know, now, you know, it kind of makes it around. And I think the third thing is going to be, let's see, communicate -- well, no, I hit on all three. Sorry. Communication, community engagement, and transportation. Three years isn't a lot to get stuff done. So, you know, I would hope that we start laying the groundwork for some of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. And then Chris Hartling, you go up next.
Thank you. So top three things. The first thing goes hand in hand with everything else. I think we all know that the businesses or the commercial taxpayers in town pay 60% of our taxes. So in essence, we're getting things for 40 cents on the dollar, if you will. So I think the first priority for me is to make sure that the businesses that pay the freight, so to speak, continue to want to locate here. That means being appealing to the next wave of what industry is going to be the industry that's going to drive this area, which is, as we all know, a very -- it's a high-tech area, so to speak. The planning board recently -- planning staff and planning board recently did something to improve our visibility in the world of life sciences. And focusing on that group and using the break that we gave to Millipore to attract other businesses like that, that for me is a priority. The other two priorities are, I thought about this, and Nick and I actually talked about this when we had our television, televised conversation. What do I leave Burlington for? I don't leave as I get -- and I'm not as old as Bob, that's obvious. But I --
No harassment here, okay? Keep it clean.
Yeah. I thought about what I leave Burlington for. I really don't leave for very much. I do like some of the downtowns better in other communities than I do here in downtown, to me, is Cambridge Street, so to speak. I also, I have to leave here and get dragged to Wakefield or Woburn to go for a walk, which is something that I need to do once in a while to get away from everything. So I would love to be able to do that here instead of getting in my vehicle to go drive somewhere to do it. So life sciences, the downtown area, and going for a walk.
All right. And Bob, do you need the question set again?
Start with the water. It's important that we continue to have a good water source, and it's important that it always be there because if we don't do something now, which we are doing, someday something's going to happen, and you're going to call me and say, "I don't have any water. Where's the water?" So we are working with the State of Massachusetts and the Mass Water, the MWRA, the Water Resource Authority, to hook up through Lexington to the main line in Arlington. It's a little expensive upfront, but it's not going to cost us a lot in our water bill. And we've worked out how we're going to do that. So don't panic about the water rates skyrocketing. That's not going to happen. So getting the water hooked up is going to be very important because right now the wells aren't going to be able to sustain us well into the future. Also, I'm starting to see the end of the road for finishing the fire station, the new fire station. I was on the committee that helped put together all the basics, the contractor, the developer, how big it should be, how, what color it should be. So we've done a lot of work, and the work continues. And I want to make sure that I stay on the Board if possible to get that finished, to have protection, fire and public safety protection in that side of town. A third one also has to do with walking and getting exercise, and that is the repair of old sidewalks. I had the opportunity to have a debate during the selectmen's meetings, and I made a motion, and we, instead of having the same debate and the same argument year after year, I said, "Let's put a million dollars in a park, in a bucket, and have a three-year spending time where DPW, when they're fixing roads, they can fix the sidewalks that go alongside of that." So I think we've taken a very positive step in getting old sidewalks fixed. Thank you.
And Nick? Have we already done all three? Okay. This is the hard thing with the rotating. Chris get the first question?
Yeah, Chris goes first.
Chris goes first. Here's a quick, easy one. Are you associated with a political party?
Yes.
Republican, Democrat, independent?
Yes. I'm a registered Democrat, but I don't know. I think I would look at the -- you said it was going to be quick and easy. I'm not going to make it quick and easy. I look at the governor of our state, technically a registered Republican, generally doesn't let that stand in the way of working with the other side, so to speak. So my personal opinion is that the future, those lines, if they're not already pretty grayed, are going to be gray. So yes, but no, but sort of, yes.
Bob Hogan?
Like Chris, I am a registered Democrat. I was born in South Boston to an Irish Catholic Democrat family, and my grandparents would roll over in their grave if I was anything but a Democrat. But also like Chris, I've had the opportunity in town to work with members of the Republican Town Committee and get their support on some issues. And yes, it is the individual most of the time. I happened to be at True North not too long ago when the governor came into town and stopped in True North to get a coffee. So I have my picture taken with a Republican governor, so don't tell him.
All right. Nick?
You got three for three. We're all Democrats. Whether that's good or bad, it helps or hurts. I was raised by my parents, who would be considered Reagan Democrats. My father was a police officer here in town for almost 40 years. I come from a fairly conservative Democratic standpoint. And like Chris and Bob, I think that, you know, regardless of party affiliation, as long as you can work with people, we're all going to disagree on stuff. I think that that's natural, especially here at the town level, right? Where, you know, we're neighbors. We all live here together. We all have to, you know, face each other in the supermarket, unless you shop at, you know, nine o'clock at night and you're hiding from people. But, you know, we're all in it together, and, you know, we're going to have our different viewpoints, but isn't that the point? If we all agreed, you know, I feel like it wouldn't result in the best outcomes. It's in our disagreement that we find solutions to things, better solutions. So I would hope that any Republican watching or any unregistered folk watching wouldn't hold that against any one of the three of us, is, you know, that we chose Democrat as our party affiliation. So thank you.
Thank you, Nick. So we go to the next question, and Bob Hogan will go first. And it's one that was asked for the planning board, but they asked it for the selectmen as well, is what are your opinions on the parking situation here at the Human Resources Building and the handicap parking here?
Again, having spent as much time as I have in this building over the years, I've often said that all the parking spaces could be handicap parking spaces based on the aging population, people coming to the Disability Access, which is the Veterans Office or the Board of Health. Obviously, that's never going to happen. But I think there's a need for a strong use of space for the handicapped, closest to the doors, closest to the access. I know there's a lot of discussion going on as to where additional parking should go, where handicap parking should go, and hopefully we'll resolve that. As a member of the Disability Access Commission, we have conversations about this. And as simple as it might seem, it too is one of those questions that takes a lot of talking to get something done. But supporting the idea of having not only an appropriate amount, but more than enough handicap parking has always been my answer to that question.
All right. Thank you. And Nick?
I think everyone said it. I was going to say, this is a hard question to answer. It's one that is going to require a lot of conversation. I'm obviously in favor of more handicap parking. The question about parking in this town in general is where's it going to go? You know, it's not something that we can just say, "Oh, yeah, we got some space over here. Let's just do that." But we do. We need to, you know, sit down and have the long, hard conversations and figure it out. I don't have any answers for you now, you know, but I've been listening to the conversations, and, you know, I think that we just need to keep talking about it. You know, if there are people in town who are going to wind up watching this and you hear this conversation, get involved if you have an idea. You know, come out. I would say that, you know, this is where community engagement takes precedent a little bit, in that, you know, there could be somebody, you know, who has an engineering background or, you know, who has an urban development background, who may know more than us. And I would absolutely welcome having that conversation because, you know, it's one that warrants a long and in-depth discussion. And I wish I had a better answer than that, but that's what I got for you right now.
Thank you. And Chris?
I never would have thought parking would have come up today. So to me, it's really not that complicated. I don't think anybody doesn't want there to be ample safe parking. I don't know if this came up during the planning board session, but clearly there's work to be done between the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to agree on a plan. We thought we had a plan that would make sense, and the Planning Board did not agree, and they had some good points as to why they didn't. So I think it's important that the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board are aligned on a parking plan, but to be truthful, I feel like what the parking plan is going to be should be heavily decided by the people here and the Board and the administrative people here in this building. So to me, I know from an administrative standpoint what we're supposed to do and what we should do, but I don't know. To me, it's a three-tiered, it's a three-headed monster, if you will, that should decide. It should be the Planning Board, it should be the Board of Selectmen, but most importantly, it should be participatory, and it should be the Board and the administrative people here that should decide what the parking future is going to be for this building.
All right. Thank you. So the next question, we'll start with Nick, is with the senior population increasing and living expenses increasing, it's getting harder for seniors to afford their homes. What do you propose to help with this problem?
So I think you'll probably hear the same answer from all three of us in some way, shape, or form here. I read it in the paper the other day, that from now till the year 2030, 10,000 people a day are going to reach retirement age. That is, that blew my mind. Blew my mind. I mean, it's not like it just like snuck up on us. You know, we knew that the baby boomers were going to get older eventually. That's what happens with time. But we need to be supporting our senior population in every way we possibly can, finding ways to help them stay in their homes, finding ways to have more, what we'll call affordable housing, that fits their needs. And when I say affordable, you know, I mean affordable, not necessarily low income. We just passed a plastic bag ban. I'll lean into this for a second, at a town meeting, and I thought that it would be fantastic to have reusable grocery bags here today for you folks. Because these are the things that we need to be doing as a community, supporting everybody, right? You know, we also have a problem allowing young folks into the community because it's too expensive for them too, right? So what are we doing? We're forcing the seniors out who helped build this community. We're not letting anybody in new, so it's just going to be like me and Chris hanging out. But I don't want that. I like Chris, but I don't want that, right? We want a diverse community. So I would definitely look into every, which possible way to support our senior population wanting to stay here in the community. You've done so much for us already. There's no reason why we should just, you know, show you the door.
All right. Chris? Do you need me to repeat the question? No? Great.
So I think really creativity is probably the easiest way, really the only feasible way to deal with this. Because if you talk about offering more services that cost more money, those costs are spread across all different groups, whether it's a commercial taxpayer or a working taxpayer or a retired taxpayer. So when I say creativity, I mean, so we all know that there's a program with the tax collector where you can quote-unquote "work hours" to defray what your tax bill actually is. I guess to me, the thing that could be talked about is a creative way to allow people who have paid their taxes and who have, I guess, enough equity, so to speak, in their homes where perhaps what they're paying in tax bills could be deferred for quote-unquote "later time." Creativity would be the only way that I could think of to increase the services and allow people to stay in their homes, should they choose to do that, without raising expenses. So this plays into the whole idea of what we're going to be doing in the future as a tax collection situation, whether that's going to be an appointed person or an elected person. Either way, that person or those people should be able to participate in a conversation towards creatively defraying the cost of people who are retired being able to afford their taxes to stay in their homes.
Thank you, Chris. Bob?
Yeah, we do have a program in town, and Marge oversees it, as Chris had noted. Maybe what we need to do is create more opportunities for people to volunteer and get credit off their taxes in order to make some opportunities work for them. The town is always looking for people to help out and to do odd jobs, and if we could match those and do more of that. We also need to take a look at, and we try to do this, and I know Chris and I have struggled with this for a number of years, making sure that the tax increases aren't out of reach. We've had some low tax increases, and I know no one likes to pay taxes, and everybody complains, as do Chris and I. They're a reality of life. But we need to make sure we have those struggles, and we have the conversations about keeping those tax increases low. And in Burlington, because of the corporate community, we're only paying 40% of what it costs to run this town, and the corporate people are paying 60%. So there's a lot of conversation still needs to be had, but there are creative opportunities, as Chris has said.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And the last question, we'll start with Chris, is what do you believe is going to be the biggest challenge for the town in the next three years? The biggest challenge?
I hate to say water because in the grand scheme of things, being able to water your lawn or not being able to water your lawn really shouldn't be the thing that we talk about the most. So from the standpoint of what do I think will be the most conversations that I have? It'll be the water because I think we're headed for more trouble there as we do get up and running with MWRA. Realistically, what I think is the most important thing is what I alluded to earlier. We gave Millipore a break to locate in Burlington, and it cost us money. The idea behind giving them the break would be that they would be sort of the Pied Piper, other businesses like them would want to locate here. So I think, to me, the most important thing or the most important issue to deal with is to make sure that those businesses that we were told would follow them here do that and continue to make our commercial tax base a viable way for us to take in, again, 60% of our revenues. So I think the water is what we'll talk about a lot, but I think there are other things, such as keeping those office buildings full, that really should be at the forefront of the conversation.
Thank you. Bob?
I agree with Chris, and as I mentioned earlier, the water is going to be a major issue for us, and I think it's going to take a couple of years to do all of the work, all of the permitting and all the construction and laying a pipe between here and Arlington. So it's going to take a couple of years, and I would like to be on the Board overseeing that project to make sure it keeps moving forward. I think too that in addition to the life sciences, we need to take a look at having a say, or at least input, into what's going to be happening in town as far as the corporate tenants. The mall is going through a major renovation, and we want to make sure that what goes in there is the right thing for the town going forward. So we're going to have those conversations, yes, about life sciences, but I think about a lot of things that we will have to deal with. I've been on the Board now for nine years, dealing with these things, and I hope I get one of your two votes. Thank you.
And Nick?
So I'll agree, and I'll say that water will be a conversation that I think we'll be having for quite some time as we get online with the MWRA. I'm going to take a bigger step back for a second and say that I think the biggest thing that we're going to be dealing with, not just in the next three years, but longer than that, is just space here in Burlington. We're 11 square miles. You know, so when we start talking about space, we start saying to ourselves, "Okay, well, we have to now balance green space, corporate space, and residential space, and make everybody happy all at the same time." You know, we have the Landlocked Forest, 250 acres, sitting up there by Route 3. How can we get people out there to start using it more, right? Chris alluded to taking walks, right? How can we get him out there to take more walks? You know, bring the life science community here to Burlington, I think is a great step forward because it's not going to increase traffic or parking in terms of space because the space they're looking for is lab space, research space. So instead of 500 people coming, it's like 100 people, right? So we can have these businesses come and do their work here and be a part of the community without drastically putting our infrastructure in overload. And then, like we talked about earlier, residents, right? How do we support our senior demographic and our younger demographic and, you know, really start seeing more of a life cycle here in town? I'll say that, you know, my wife and I just managed to jump into town seven and a half years ago before the market really turned back around. Otherwise, I don't think that we'd be here. But we are, and we had that great opportunity, and I want to see that opportunity for other families here in town, and not always have to put the burden of building an in-law, you know, complex on someone's property, but, you know, allowing families to live, you know, generationally here in town. So that's what I see for the next three and plus years.
Thank you, Nick. And now we're going to do the closing statements, and we'll start from the back and work our way forward. So Chris Hartling?
Short and sweet. Carol alluded to this in her closing remarks. I think any, this position, so to speak, it's a cycle, and it has a life cycle to it. And in my opinion, you've got three very good candidates. You now have the challenge of picking which two you want to represent you for the next three years. I say short and sweet because really it's about, for me, it's a learning process. Everything's a learning. We learn until we no longer can comprehend anything. So I've learned what I feel is a lot over the last six years. You learn a lot in your first year, your second year, you learn a lot in the sixth year. To me, I just feel like the experience that I have will make me an asset to the Board and to you going forward, so I'd ask you for one of your two votes in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Bob Hogan? Did I do that right? Does this make a difference?
Does it to me, does it?
No.
We're good. As I mentioned and Chris just mentioned, there are two seats, two votes for you. I'm asking for one of those votes. I've been on the Board now for nine years. I've been the Chair a couple of times, Vice Chair a couple of times. And I have found it to be very rewarding, not only as a member of the Board of Health because of the other things I do in town, but to give back to the community is important. And I'm so proud to work alongside so many great people, whether they're doing it for the $100 or $500 they get paid for the whole year, or they do it because they just want to volunteer. It's a great community, and we're all very involved. I'm going to mention too that my daughter was in the BEAM program, and her son, my grandson, is going to be going through the school system shortly. So we want the entire town to be in good shape, and we work well with the school committee to make sure that the schools for our children and our grandchildren to make sure that the schools for our children and our grandchildren are in great shape. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nick Priest?
So, thank you all very much for your time today. I would say that I am honored to be able to stand here among two very excellent, you know, Board of Selectmen who have served our town beautifully. They've done everything in their power to see that the last nine and six years, we've seen achievements. And I can only hope to stand and fill those shoes. It is both humbling and a privilege to be able to do that. Like I said, my wife and I, we're raising our three kids here. We're not going anywhere. My parents still live in town. I feel like I have a lot to give to the community through the Board of Selectmen, given the different perspective and my skill set in communications. And I respectfully ask for your vote on April 6th. So, thank you very much.
And why don't we give a big round of applause?